We'll call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order on December 17, 2024, and begin with introductions. I'm Zan Ogero, Board Chair, chairing my last meeting. So, pass it on.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Corney, County Council.
Rachel McEnany, County Administrator.
And then in the room, we'll start with Gary.
Devin Kepner, Public Works Fleet.
Greg Lee, Public Affairs.
Pickles Fowler, Chair of the County Planning Commission.
Vera Hartstein, Ventura County.
Forest Land Management Board of Commissioners.
Daisy Lalow, EDP Director.
April Follin, Health.
Will Place, GNDIO.
Greg Mynne, Finance.
John Larrick, EDP.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
And do we have anyone joining us online today?
John Wilson.
Thank you. Morning. Okay. With that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this morning?
I just have a little short conversation I want to have at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Under other noted, any announcements? As I understand it, there are no comments from the public unless there's someone online who wishes to make comment. If you're online and wish to make comment, please note in the chat immediately, or just call out. Seeing and hearing no one, we will move on to the consent calendar. It contains minutes from November 18, special board meeting, and appointments to road districts.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Next up is our work session item, and we will be hearing from the Benton County Fleet. Gary Stockoff and Devin, if you want to join him, please.
I think.
Mina's on the agenda as well, but he's hiding in the back.
He hiding in the back, that guy.
If he wants to join you.
If we could pull that PowerPoint up, that'd be awesome. Fleet.
We'll call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order on December 17, 2024, and begin with introductions. I'm Zan Ogero, Board Chair, chairing my last meeting. So, pass it on.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Corney, County Counsel.
Rachel McEnany, County Administrator.
And then in the room, we'll start with Gary.
Devin Kepner, Public Works Fleet.
Greg Lee, Public Affairs.
Pickles Fowler, Chair of the County Planning Commission.
Vera Hartstein, Ventura County.
Forest Land Management Board of Commissioners.
Daisy Lalow, EDP Director.
April Follin, Health.
Will Place, GNDIO.
Greg Mynne, Finance.
John Larrick, EDP.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
And do we have anyone joining us online today?
John Wilson.
Thank you. Morning. Okay. With that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this morning?
I just have a little short conversation I want to have at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Under other noted, any announcements? As I understand it, there are no comments from the public unless there's someone online who wishes to make comment. If you're online and wish to make comment, please note in the chat immediately, or just call out. Seeing and hearing no one, we will move on to the consent calendar. It contains minutes from November 18, special board meeting, and appointments to road districts.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Next up is our work session item, and we will be hearing from the Benton County Fleet. Gary Stockoff and Devin, if you want to join him, please.
I think.
Mina's on the agenda as well, but he's hiding in the back.
He hiding in the back, that guy.
If he wants to join you.
If we could pull that PowerPoint up, that'd be awesome. Fleet. So Commissioners, just before or while we're getting that pulled up, last year, obviously, we were tasked with doing some deeper dives into the fleet program and then committed to coming back at least quarterly to update you on how things are going. We got a little sidetracked earlier, and so this is our quarterly update for this particular time. And then we anticipate the next one will be, will be in March. All right. So I've met with Greg and Devin and Mary Lee about this. Again, we're, it's very much a tag team and Mr. Craig is still involved a little bit here and there, but we have made great progress. So as we've gone through, I think in the past, we've included a lot more background information, but I think you guys are all kind of up, you know, where we were at and how we got here, and this is just a kind of summary of those items. I think the biggest thing to know is that we did in 2023, complete that deeper analysis and came up with several items and findings, and have actually begun to start addressing those. The key findings that we found as we started the process is at that time, we were charging $143 an hour to our external customers. We knew that was below market. That was confirmed. At that time, a rough break even point was about 183. So we did acknowledge that. We also, with Mary Lee doing some forensic analysis and looks, found that we actually had some issues with how we were doing the methodology between the internal and external customers, and you'll see, we've actually addressed some of those. We did last, I should say, this July, this past July, did a mid biennium adjustment to the rate. In the past, we would set it, and then it was good for two years, actually locked it in with several customers, which was hard for us to, you know, then address things when it did come time to adjust it, the rate looks, increases look more than they were, you know, were. And then we also let folks know that in 25, July 25, that next biennium, that they will all be charged the full rate. There'll be no more deals to sell, to speak of. So, and with that, then, this is just a quick recap. I might bounce back to this one, but this really indicates kind of the deficits for the last two bienniums, where we got some savings and how we have backfilled it. And then right now, in the far right corner at the bottom, is what we're projecting to be the deficit at the end of this biennium. It's actually held pretty steady. You'll see that one thing we found is that we are trending in the right direction. So Greg might want to talk more about this, but I'd like to go to the next thing that here's what we've actually done since we last met. I said we had the rates at 153. We committed to letting our customers know that there would be a larger increase coming for July 1 of 25. That went out when we notified folks of this rate, and then we committed to sending out a letter of what we thought that increase would be in the fall, so that they would have time as part of their upcoming budget process to make accommodations for the higher rate. Presently, we have set that rate, the estimate, as Mr. Craig wanted us to say, the estimate of that rate will be 193 per hour. It may go up a little bit. I can say it probably won't go down, but that is very much in line with the folks in the industry doing the same kind of work. And so we'll go basically from 153 last July to 193-ish, and that brings us in line where we should have been a long time ago. We did let folks know that, and I will say that we've really only heard back from one that they have decided to move on, and that is one that we weren't surprised in, that actually is the city of Lebanon. So they'll go out and look for other folks to take care of their services. Then you all have already approved that $811,000 fund balance, but we'll wait on 365 that until we see what the exact amount is at the end of this biennium. And then there's the good news, the fourth bullet, after we've done all these little things, the third quarter of this year, we actually broke even. So that, that's huge, and that really goes to being fully staffed, implementing some of these, the things that Mary Lee found, adjusting rates. And so it was really a combination of a lot of things that got us to where we're at. So very much trending in the right direction. You know, we don't know how this quarter is going to be because obviously we had the strike and some other stuff, but we are, we're, I feel, we've cleared a lot of hurdles here to be setting up things for the, where we're going to go. So the next steps. There we go. So next steps, over the next few months, we'll finalize the rates. That'll all be part of the budget process, so that we'll know exactly what that is for the next year. One thing that Devin has found is, in his short time here, is that we probably were leaving money on the table regarding parts. If we're going to run this kind of as a private business, we need to do a couple of adjustments. So he is actually looking at how much we charge for our parts, and we've found some funds that we're actually leaving on the table there. We'll make those adjustments. We also, obviously, if you didn't know, we do a lot of spec work for other agencies in buying vehicles. We had a, I think when I first started, we had a flat rate of like $400. It could be a $500,000 fire truck, and we'd charge $400. So we are adjusting that. It's going to go up to be more in line with what we're actually specking, and and it's a service that I think we do a good job at, helping out ambulances and fire trucks or whatever, my, some of these agencies that don't have that experience. But again, they were getting a very good deal from us on that. Reviewing building labor hours, I think that's kind of what is the real number of hours that we should be working, not what we think we can do. Set that at a realistic number for every mechanic to go every year and hit that goal. I think where we were at before, it was the lower rates, that number was here, and we know that that, now that we've had a couple of years of looking at that, there was no way we ever were going to hit that number. So with the higher rates, we can adjust the hours down to make those goals realistic and match what folks in the industry are actually doing. I think it's around 1,400 hours.
1,473 is the industry standard, just to be exact.
Yeah.
The other thing that we found with Devin here and also Mary Lee is how we've done inventory, tracked it or not tracked it or kept it. So we're going to refine that, make it more cost effective, cost efficient, and also look at how we're taking care of that. You'll see in your budget proceedings, we've asked for a service rider position, which is going to be like kind of the organizer of all the things in the shop to get people pointed in the right direction and be that one point of contact. Again, make us more efficient, more effective. And then the next update we'll have will be in March of 2025. So I know we went through that pretty fast. I don't know if Greg wants to go back and talk about anything on the finance side of things. We can go back, or if you have any questions in particular. But that's our report for the quarter, and I just would say, with Devin and Mary Lee and everything Rick's helped us, and now Greg, we have, we have turned a lot, a lot of corners since I got here six years ago with Fleet. It's actually really moving in the right direction.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and it's very exciting to see us in break even for that single quarter anyway, and we will hope it's the beginning of a new trajectory. As an enterprise fund, obviously, you need to be able to balance and stay in the black and invest in equipment to move forward, serve our customers, internal and external. But are you also thinking about or calculating any sort of a public entity? Not discount, but just taking into account the fact that this is a very specific service sector? It's a tough balancing act. I think we went too far that direction previously, but I'm just wondering whether that's entered into the conversation at all.
I, I, I don't, we haven't really considered an entity discount. That's kind of what we've been doing.
Yeah, I understood. I understand. I just.
And, and I think that where the discount comes is in, and I'll use our friends at Corvallis Fire. Where the discount comes is, we're right there. They literally can drive the truck down the road, bring it to us, and they're not shuttling anything to Salem or Eugene or whatever. It really is a time efficiency thing. And, and I'll just, as an editorial statement here, that is what Lebanon is going to find as their problem. Our mechanic that serves them lives in Lebanon. We staged a truck out there for him. He would shuttle stuff back and forth right at their, their, their new fire station. That is no longer going to be something they get to enjoy, and, and so I think that's where the savings probably comes is just in that service level that we can provide because we're right here. But I think that we have to be very careful that we're being fair, and, and that goes to internal as well as external. We have to, you know, it's, it's fair on both sides.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, I appreciate the update and, and the good news, and, and so this is all the external we, you were talking about today. Does that mean internal is doing fine and that the real problem is external?
I think the percentages that we had internal, external was part of the problem. So you will see that externals were probably subsidizing internals a little bit. So that, those adjustments will continue to be made. The internals, the internals, you'll see that again as part of the budget process as we go through and start assigning rates and such for the next, next biennium.
Well, I appreciate the, kind of the study on comparables and making sure that we're at least close to the ballpark, if not in the ballpark, and, and then we have some technical skills, some mechanic, I think of fire trucks that are, everyone's different, and to be able to work on those and make sure they have a quick turnaround. I, I agree with your assessment on Lebanon. They're looking at dollars per hour or not considering the whole picture of what they're getting. And if they do leave, they may have buyer's remorse, that they got some things that they like, and, but and if this is, especially if it's going to a for-profit private outfit, sometimes, sometimes salesmen exaggerate a little bit about just how things are going to work out. And so, but I appreciate bringing this into more of a business so that the general public isn't subsidizing the work that we do, the important work that we do. So appreciate the considerable effort that's gone into this. And I guess the other thing I was going to mention is really appreciate the long lead time on, this is coming after the July 1, new fiscal year, and we, you know, budget accordingly. So I think that's, again, good, good service to the, to the community that we serve. So thank you.
Well, I too am very pleased to hear this information. It's always, you know, a little nerve wracking as a commissioner, and you hear, oh, we have this issue, we've got this deficit, you know, but just trust us, we're going to fix it, you know. It can, you know, I trusted staff the whole time. I knew you were going to be able to do it, but it's still one of those things. So I'm just, I'm very pleased that we are moving in the right direction. Thank you very much for all of your, your work on this.
And one more comment, the, the new rate, which is, what'd you say, 190?
193 minimum.
Oh, I've checked around a little bit, and that's definitely in the ballpark, if not a, still a relatively good deal, especially with the specialized service that you provide. So it's a, it's a big number, but I think that's a little bit of research that I've done is reasonable.
And we do, just so you know, we do look at that every January or so, just to see where things are at, to make sure we're in line with where everybody's at, and it's been pretty consistent. That rolling average has been pretty consistent going up over the last several years especially. So we'll do the same thing in January. One other thing I will say is that we will continue to do annual adjustments. And, and so even though, I mean, we're working on the rate for '25, we'll also then immediately start working on what the rate will be for '26, and, and, you know, notify everybody accordingly.
And do we have, with most of our external clients, do we have contracts in place, or is it on a?
We, we do not right now. No, that, that was, that was good and bad, in that it did lock the rates in at those low rates. I think we can get into some service level agreements, which Keith started to kind of, this is what we're going to do for you to set that. But we've just been focusing so much on the budget and trying to get that resolved, and then we'll tackle the other stuff.
That makes sense. I was thinking, you know, every other department also has annual rate increases and it's time. Yeah. So thank you. This is very good news indeed. I'm still, it's not the first place I would have put $800,000 of county money. We have so many needs, but hopefully this can be turned around, and it will be the last time we have.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a discussion, regional housing update with Planning Commission members and Subcommittee as well. Oh, am I, I'm off. That's right. Next up is actually the approval of the statewide transportation improvement fund projects for '25, '27 with Gary Stockoff, Lisa Scherf, and Charlene Pesh. Sorry about that. Almost skipped right over.
And thank you Commissioners for accommodating. My mother appreciates it greatly. She'll be glad to see my face in Roseburg this afternoon. So this is our every two-year opportunity to look at the projects with our new statewide state transportation improvement fund process. And as we've explained in the past, the last cycle, the state became a little more persnickety on how we list our projects. The first year we had it, we had kind of a get out of jail free project where if we had something come up, we could fund it because if we had a balance, and we did. Now, if, if your project's not listed, you can't add a project. So that goes to the list you have, and I apologize for the last second addition, but we found out that we needed to add the OSU Mobility Hub instruction side as part of this '25, '27 cycle. We had hoped that they were going to be able to be underway and spend the funds that we allocated in the current plan. I know this will shock you, but they're having a struggle getting their permits.
From Corvallis?
A local agency. And so there's, there's no way that they're going to get the permits, get it advertised, get it underway in time to expend the money that we had had that. So this is your last, sorry, second edition of putting those, that COG 3 project onto the list that you see today. And, and we're still have a surplus in the whole program, which is good that we can, if something needs a little bit more money, we can move it through. And this will all go through the STIF Advisory Committee, and I think we've captured all the projects that we have solicited with our sub recipients and our co-agencies and everybody in there, and Charlene has done a marvelous job of herding the cats to get this all put together and keep changing things and trying to track down the right information from ODOT. We have to submit this to ODOT by January 16. So we chose to come to this meeting because we just didn't want to wait to the last meeting, that January 7 meeting. What we found out about this one is the COG 3 project still has to be reviewed and recommended to be on the list by the committee. So what we are asking for today is that the main list be approved, and then COG 3 be conditionally approved, pending the review of that one project by the committee, which we hope to have done that first week in January. But the main list, everything down to COG 3, has all been reviewed by the committee, ranked. Staff, I should say, Lisa and Charlene went through, and they, they kind of scored projects, so the committee ranked them, moved some up, moved some down. And so if there's any project that you have a question about, you know, please let us know. I will tell you, we have some discretionary matches on there for two projects for Benton County. We did not get either of our projects funded. Not, not the security fence nor the vehicle replacement. And so we've also listed the full costs for those items on there as well. So money kind of gets moved around as we go through this because, you know, again, we're trying to look out two years to get this done, and sometimes it's a little bit of a Ouija board kind of process. So, but the good news is we still have reserve funds in there. We've got these other projects, and I think we've captured the things that our agencies wanted to capture. Been a great process, a little hectic this fall because Charlene had started. We had other stuff that had to get done. So this is kind of a culmination of a lot, a lot of work, and the committee did a great job.
And it looks like there's also a second item for us to consider, and that's approving the sub-allocation methodology?
Yes, I, I was so focused on the, yeah, the first item is to, the methodology for how things got allocated, which I think is attachment A. Yes.
Are there any questions about the suballocation methodology?
Not about the methodology.
I would consider a motion with respect to the methodology.
I'll move to approve and adopt the sub-allocation methodology for distribution of STIF funds in Benton County as shown in attachment A.
Second?
All in favor, please signify with an I.
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 I. And now moving on to the projects themselves, Commissioner Wise, you have a question?
Could you, what is the mobility hub? Could you just give me like a very short description?
Lisa, could you?
Is this on?
No.
It is a, at Jefferson and 15th, like kind of where McNary Hall is, there, there is a kind of a pull through right there that OSU is, has agreed to donate the land for this mobility hub, which is sort of a glorified transit stop. And it will be a regional hub for the Lynn Benton Loop, Benton area transit, Corvallis Transit System, and I think Flix Bus as well as the Campus Beaver Bus. So it's going to bring all of those transit services to that location with improved lighting, shelters, benches, bike parking, this enhanced transit amenities.
Thank you, that sounds great.
There, there's also a companion smaller hub being done at Lynn Benton. So this is also something that we're in Lynn County with as well.
And I would note that this project's, the genesis of this project came at the very beginning of the genesis of the STIF program. And ODOT actually conceived the project and convinced the COG to apply and be kind of the agent for it. So it has strong ODOT support and always has.
And will the OSU mobility hub take some pressure off of the city's transit hub downtown?
It could. I mean, we, we, the way the routes are designed right now, not necessarily, but it, it could offer an ability to maybe say not bring every bus downtown like we do now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and part of the idea is to make transit more attractive and shelter and I think bike parking. And Lisa, did you mention charging, potential charging stations or is that in the future?
There is space reserved for that. That would be a future project. It's not, it's not funded with this first phase. But the, the other thing that I failed to mention as a sort of an in kind donation is that OSU would, will be building on the north side of Jefferson because there are, there will be transit facilities on both sides of the street. A widened walkway along that whole front edge. I think it's eight to 10 feet wide. So there'll be improved pedestrian amenities on that north side that are ancillary to the mobility hub, but they've agreed to do that.
And it's my understanding that the hub at LBCC is on budget and on, on time to finish this, well, start and finish this fiscal year.
Their first phase, they've had to phase some of the improvements. So I think they had to eliminate a public restroom, but.
I think I covered, I think I sheltered.
Okay. So they've had to phase theirs that different politics that we've, their STIF committee has been, has entertained their requests for that project a little differently than the Benton County STIF committee.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the projects and associated, associated budgets for the fiscal years 2527 Benton County STIF formula payroll projects. With the conditional approval of the Oregon Cascades West Council of Government project contingent upon approval by the STIF committee. And that, so that's in revised attachment A and also attachment C.
Stiff formula population funded projects.
It's revised attachment B, Commissioner.
Okay. This says A, so I was confused, but.
That one has more to do with the methodology.
Okay, revised attachment B and attachment C. Okay. So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate with an I.
I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
And Charlene, nice to see you in person. Okay. Now we're ready for the regional housing update and discussion. Welcome to our planning commission members. Chair Fowler and Commissioner Fulford and Rick Crager.
I'll, I'll offer some introductory remarks and Madam Chair, Commissioners, you're well aware and we are privileged to have a competent and motivated planning commission. And each year we have a discussion around the priorities in which we want to spend our, our time and our resources at a discretionary level. We've had the, the pleasure of having some work sessions with the board on some of these priorities. This past year amongst the priorities that traditionally bubble to the top include the revision of the comprehensive plan as well as the development code. So we've stood up a subcommittee led by Vice Chair Greg Hayman to partner with community development on those two significant projects. But we're here today to discuss the second subcommittee that we have stood up around the priority of housing, both affordability and availability of regional housing. So without taking any more time from Commissioner Fulford, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Good morning, Commissioners, Counselor, Administrator. Thanks for taking time to hear us give an update this morning. We're going to cover an update on the program today, some findings as well as some, hopefully an ask at the end, some approvals for continuing. We'll go ahead and get started on the slides. Are you guys controlling, do I control? This technology is. So the agenda today, regional housing project update, some facts and trends as well as a sense of urgency. Right, we've been kicking this hand down the road for a while and it's, it's come due. So some stats and some data, as well as socialization learnings. Last, last February, we started meeting with folks and finished up in November. So we'll go through some of those learnings. And then hopefully some next steps, some approvals, if it goes well, as well as some information on budgets. I know the budget process is coming up. So project goal, and you all probably know a lot about this. Our initial goal is just to explore, right, the regional, both short term and long term housing. It's broad housing. It's not just affordable. It's not just workforce. It's not just elderly. It's really talking to all of our partners in and around the region to understand their perspectives. A lot of listening, right? It's exploring. And this phase has more or less come to an end in November. And so we're rolling all the findings up and all the discussions we've had with the community into, into that. But at a higher level, right, fundamental goals, we're trying to get Benton County to a sustainable future housing state, right? Also build a resilient community ready for change, which I think is probably one of the bigger challenges we have. The culture here has been resist growth and development, right? And so we need to change that. And so we need to come up with ways to actually work that. And the last one is basically start to invest and build a full range of housing for Oregonians here, be it school, work or different aspects adding to our economy in this area. You can see a whole list of various folks down at the bottom. Next one. Project scope, you know, as we talk to various folks in and around the region, we noticed there was, you know, where's our sweet spot on the county level? Obviously Corvallis is here and it's a, you know, the 800 pound grill in the room, right? And so Corvallis, after speaking with them, they're really focused right now on affordable housing, the lower end. But if, if they don't work with, if it's just a focus on affordable housing, what ends up happening is you get a bunch of affordable housing and nobody can move up the continuum. And so this, this slide here is really the continuum, right? You can get stuck anywhere along the way and not, not be able to move. And so you have to really address it holistically and not just one aspect. And so right now Corvallis is focusing on the affordable piece. I think through all the discussions and whatnot, Benton County's is probably workforce and elderly. I know I have friends with 80 year old moms that are occupying 3,000 square foot homes and it's the family homes, right? And so the families are stuck in townhomes and they want to move up, right? The folks that are in apartments want to go up and they can't. So everything gets stuck. It's a continuum, right? And so we need to address it holistically. Here's the project timeline. More or less, we got started last February, talked to a ton of people. You'll see in a slide in a second, it's close to 50 various teams, agencies, groups. And we're getting to the point right now where we're wanting to go to the next phase, phase two, which we'll talk about here in a second. Here's the socialization plan, which I, I kind of like. We talked to a ton of people. Rick and Liz Irish were with us quite a bit in talking, talking to these folks. But amazing, right? Great insight. It's a huge puzzle and everybody owns their little piece of it. I think that's part of the reason why housing has taken so long to kind of gain traction. It's big, it's complex, it's a lot of moving parts, a lot of people, a lot of partners and lots and lots of challenges and some culture that kind of works against you as well. And so you can see through the list here, state government, agencies, 12 cities, 10 belpers builders, five conservationists, 1,000 friends in sideline. We actually took them on a tour. That was kind of nice. Big, big employers around town. We have some big ones for sure and various housing experts. We're also, we've developed a selection criteria for a leadership team. We haven't really selected them just yet. I think we're waiting to make sure we get proper approvals and funding for the next. Regional facts and trends, and I think in your, in your handouts, there's a ton of, I'll, I'll call it last minute paperwork. My apologies for that. I, I'd forgotten, we need to get everything in a week prior, but it's some pretty good stats. One of the things that, that we really need to address is the urgency piece, right? Everything's good, our housing prices are all going up, everybody's living nice. But there's a couple of problems that are coming at us rather quickly. And it's sort of, sort of the canary in the coal mine on the urgency side. As your schools start to decrease or decline in enrollment, it creates all sorts of other problems as well. And so the, the school system is really the soul of community, right? Everything, it's a hub, right? Everything kind of goes through it. You meet, you know, new parents, you socialize, you go to basketball games, football games, and everything kind of goes around that. As that starts to decline, it creates a whole new set of problems. So if you combine that sense of urgency with the, the school system struggling and then you look at the housing units, it's a state challenge, right? So Oregon ranks 46th in production. Governor's office goal is 36,000 units. I mean, you guys know these, these numbers, right? And they only produce 60,000, which is about 15,000 statewide over the last four years. Benton County, our goal is 5,000. We produced almost 1,000 over the last four years. So that's about 250 a year, which is very problematic. In the county, actually far as rent burning, it went up 2% year over year, which isn't good. Lastly, commuters got about 26,000 inbound daily and only about 6,000 outbound. I'll hit this one pretty quick. Enrollment decline. We did meet with Ryan Nos from the Corvallis School District. He said, yeah, that, that's exactly what's taking place. This is actually their, their graphic. Schools declining a lot. Well, it's almost 8% over the last 11 years, but over the last year it picked up speed. It went down 3.6%. Some of that is decline in birth rates, but a lot of it is families moving out because they can't afford it. And so you'll see enrollments decline on that as well. It's problematic for sure. So you know, once, once you're in this state of your schools declining, your workforce can't get housing, everything starts to kind of taper down. Some economic consequences, right? Property prices ride, affordability declines and of course, families start to move out. Job loss, I think some of those stats that I gave you, the educational services is 23%, 20 in some of those charts, 23 in others. But as your school starts to go down, obviously those numbers are impacted. And so you have job loss in the, in the county as well. Population decline, and you probably see this one, you know, how, how many of your friends or families that have kids, do they shop in Corvallis? Or do they go to some other place, right? We have some pretty cool boutique shops and stuff downtown, but you know, where's, where's the Target, right? Where's the place where these young families can actually shop? That's problematic right there. Community dynamics, right? We've got, and I said this one before, the community hubs, right? Everything kind of runs through the, through the school system far as our community goes. And last couple on this one, and I think I've kind of driven this one home, right? If things get to a certain state, housing prices will actually start to decline. We'll start losing value. Yeah, let's hit the next one as well. So here's some rent burdening numbers. Number one in Corvallis, so rent burdening is paying more than 50% as you know, of your monthly paycheck towards rent. Corvallis is at, at 25%. It's severely rent burdened, we're at 39%. So we're well above the number one city in the state. Obviously a lot of that probably falls on the Corvallis side, but we're in this as well. So you can see the bubbles. This one is worth a thousand words, right? There it is, Corvallis in Benton County. Benton County's number two behind Portland or Multnomah County, but Corvallis is number one in severely rent burden. And if you combine that with the number of housing units, right? I mentioned this one before, so for the last four years, and some of that is COVID, right? I do realize that, but we basically built 1,000 units over the last year. Socialization learnings. All the large employers obviously love this, if you want to hear it. I know HP was trying to get some CHIP, CHIP Act funding for some, some work up in HP. It's, it's, everybody wants it, everybody wants it for sure. Everybody's leaning the right way. Matter of fact, Adair Village, I think John Wilson's on, says, hey, we can do 1,000 units if you can help us put together wastewater treatment plant up in that area, which is on the north end of town for Good Sam, HP, and those folks up there. Bend and Yan Hill had really good economic models. One was Sedcor. Bend is doing some fantastic things. So there's ways, there's paths, there's frameworks that we can leverage to get us down the road. On my side, I'm an enabler, right? I try to get with people and hopefully put the right people together to get the stuff done. But we have a path, we want to go down that path. Eugene and Tillmook actually hired SMEs, some housing SMEs to, I think Rick, Rick said it well, it's adding capacity and strength to your county staff to actually be able to do housing faster. There, there comes a cost with it, right? But I think the value on it is huge. A lot of, a lot of developers steer clear of Corvallis and Benton County just because of the hurdles, the costs, the time adds. And so that was a reoccurring theme through most of this. So we got to figure out ways to change policy, change tax, change a variety of things to enable it to happen more quickly. And last one, housing is really a whole community need. You know, we talked about the continuum. But this is, you know, teachers, firefighters, doctors, engineers, senior students, it's everybody. And so next steps in our ask, uh, I think the first two, um, will hold for a couple of minutes. Uh, we'll make that a motion toward the end. Uh, the next four bullets, um, are the key next steps, right? It's kind of laying foundation, uh, to do housing here. Uh, one is, uh, uh, the regional housing needs analysis. That's part of the comp plan that is ongoing right now. DLCD has funded that, so that was nice. Uh, we also need to create a buildable lands inventory. So we know what's, uh, what's our capacity for development, redevelopment, infill. And then come up with a housing production strategy. And these last four bullets are all part of the budget that was, uh, added at the end. Last one, housing SME and a program framework. So we can actually, uh, go down correctly. Here's the budget ask. You can see the numbers. You have those in front of you. Basically six seventy-five over the next, next two year. I think the last one, oh, I like this one. I think Pat, you, you'll like this one too. Best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. Uh, second best time is now. I think it's come to a point where we need to start making movements and it's a, it's a big ask, right? Lots of moving parts, lots of complexity, lots of partners. And I think there was a meeting, was it last week? Where, um, a lot of folks from around the state got together. Everybody's looking at each other for leadership and ways to do it. And I think over the last year, uh, with all this, um, partner sharing and listening, I think we do have a path forward. And I would recommend that, uh, we fund phase two, which is the investment and actual solutions creation. Move from there. I don't know if Rick or Nick, you want to add anything to that?
I, I guess I would add that the last six months, Ed and his team have really established, uh, and quantified the need that we all know intuitively. Uh, but he's also put together a leadership scaffold. Uh, it really appears as though we need this scaffold into which to host these conversations and, and establish leadership by the county. This is a regional issue, not simply a city or a county issue. And that's the approach that Commissioner Fulford is, is taking. And the asks suggests a population of that, uh, leadership scaffold and specific activities to prepare the foundation, uh, going forward, consistent with the strategy and goals that he's laid out.
Yeah. And I guess I would just, first of all, thank both Nick, Ned and, and the Planning Commission. They've done a great job in terms of really taking this initiative, starting last February and working through it. I had the opportunity to work with Ed and this through most of the summer and into the fall. And there's been a lot of great conversations. I think we've learned a lot. Um, and as time has gone along, I think the scope sometimes changes a little bit, the things that we need to adjust. And I think it's really what we want to be able to come here today and get some direction from the Board of Commissioners on, on where to take this very important work. I think the, the last thing I would add, and, um, I know Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Malone, myself and Rachel were all at the Leadership Summit and we heard from the governor. And clearly the governor's budget has $2 billion of resources. And now it's a governor's budget, still got to get to the legislature. But this is going to be a big issue from a statewide standpoint. And with that comes opportunity. And, and so how do we position ourselves as a county, as a region, to be able to effectively respond? Can't make it happen overnight, obviously, but I like Ed's quote here that, you know, the best time to start, you know, is we, we need to be thinking about this now and can, and can't continue to, to, to put it down the road. So again, just lots of thanks to Ed for, uh, his work and Nick for his leadership with the Planning Commission and moving this work forward.
Thank you. I think we probably all agree that this is a critical issue for our region, um, for the county, um, for the city of Corvallis, uh, as well. Uh, the school district, um, for, so, uh, but I have some real issues about, um, the ask in terms of scope, um, in terms of geographic scope, for instance. Some of this work, obviously, as you mentioned, nests within the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, work and the code update. And, but if we are talking larger region, it doesn't nest. So what do, what do we as a county want to focus on and fund in the near term? What are the other partners that we might work with, uh, to look at the larger geographic area, um, possibly through the council of governments or through other entities? So I have some questions about the phasing of the work and how it dovetails with the existing work of community development on the, uh, uh, comprehensive plan review and code work. And I'm familiar with buildable lands inventory for, uh, cities, but, uh, I don't know that about counties. Uh, we, clearly we have, we have housing lands, but they're not extensive and they're, uh, fairly low density. So I'm curious to know more about that component as well. So I, I guess I think it's, we need to invest in this. I just have a lot of questions about scope and leadership and how best to package it to get to where we want to be and to be in the best place to respond to the governor's initiative. So that's my general thoughts and comments. These decisions will be made by, um, the new board when Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner -elect Shepherd is seated. Uh, and, um, obviously I will also involve the Budget Committee, um, which will be meeting starting when in March or April. So, uh, we can give you a strong sense of direction today and the kind of sense of urgency or priority. But I don't think we can, um, give you anything specific in terms of the, uh, funding magnitude at this time. So with that, I want to turn to questions from my fellow commissioners and, and really hopefully have a discussion, um, so that we can, uh, give staff clarity about where to go from here.
Well, yeah, you've given us, uh, a lot to, uh, think about. And, and I, uh, appreciate and, and, and very impressed with the effort that's gone into this project to get us, uh, to this point. So, uh, uh, thank you very much for identifying the, the problem. And, uh, I do share the, I think a sense of urgency is, is a good phrase to, this isn't a problem that's showing up recently. I, I, I think of, uh, oh, the, uh, serious recession we had, oh, six, oh, eight, that, uh, that housing was, in, in the center of and, uh, really decimated the, building capacity and, and building, uh, why would we build houses when everything, when nothing's selling and the world is going to end? So, uh, and, and in some ways we haven't recovered from that. The, uh, the workforce that, uh, does our house building, uh, when there's nothing to do for a year or two, uh, you probably find other occupations. And, and I'm, uh, sure a part of the problem is, is workforce, but, um, let's see. I, I guess I'd share the, um, notion that with, uh, Commissioner Ojero, that we need more information, uh, and, and at some point this has got to, um, be put in with, um, many other, um, departments and, um, uh, asking for funding sources. I guess that's the bad news. The good news is, uh, as, as been mentioned, this is a, uh, priority of our governor. And so, uh, I think that's helpful to, um, tie in with, uh, themes that are already in place. So, um, that's, that's on the good side. And I really appreciate, uh, you mentioned, um, Bend and Yam Hill County and Tillamook and, and, uh, maybe other jurisdictions that are maybe a little ahead of us. And, and it's nice to have models to, um, follow and, and say, oh. And going first isn't always an advantage. You, and, uh, make more mistakes. And so hopefully we can learn from what other jurisdictions of, are, uh, trying to implement and, and tailor our, uh, efforts accordingly. But, um, just a, well, profound thank you for this considerable, uh, effort. And I'm, I'm a big fan of charts and graphs. And, and so you can see, uh, trends and, uh, the, uh, school district trend that we've known about. But when you put it in a chart and, uh, see that it's maybe increasing, uh, you know, not, uh, stabilizing plateau is one thing, but declining and, uh, as we know, uh, state funding for education comes on a per student basis, uh, for the most part. And, uh, if you have fewer students, you have less money, but you have the same buildings and overhead and, um, well, it makes things tougher. But, uh, just, uh, thank you for this, um, presentation.
Thank you for doing all of this work and coming before us today and compiling all of the, the PowerPoint. That's helpful to have. Thank you. I feel like, so I, I'm going to wade through this. I have a bunch of notes all over. So please bear with me. This is definitely a big problem. It's one that we need to address. You know, I do want to move the needle for Benton County. I would love for Benton County to be a leader in this area. I still have a lot of questions, you know, what's the proper order? What are the deliverables? What, what outcome are we going to have? If Benton County is going to spend money, what are we going to have to show for it? Like, I want to make sure that any investment is going to, um, result in, you know, some, some tangible outcome. You know, acknowledging that on these big problems, if you, if at some point you don't just jump in, then you're, then it's never going to get done, right? So at some point, uh, we do have to sort of bite the bullet. I, I'm wondering if perhaps we could have, uh, a joint meeting or invite, uh, stakeholders to a goal-setting meeting in the, in the near future, um, to sort of flush out some of these ideas a little more. Because like I said, I still have a lot of questions. And, and I would like to hear more from other stakeholders, um, other folks who are willing to put their skin in the game and see what they are going to be committed to. Cause you know, I, so my philosophy is density goes in the cities, not out in the unincorporated areas. But I don't have jurisdiction in the cities. So for example, you know, we hear a concern that, you know, maybe Corvallis on occasion has a hard time turning around permits or people, you know, they have, they complain about their land development code. Although my understanding is that the city council is making that a goal moving forward. But that's, there's nothing I can do about that personally as a commissioner, right? So I guess I'm not ready today to make anything official, but I would like to continue the conversation, um, if that works for everybody else.
I think that's what's recommended, um, as a motion, or we don't even necessarily have a motion, but we do want to ask staff to come back with a plan, um, that will perhaps serve as a vehicle for further conversation. And certainly, uh, Commissioner-elect Shepherd will be an important component of that conversation as well. And hopefully we'll be able to, uh, increase the, um, level of interaction with the city of Corvallis based on his current relationships there. Because they are such a critical partner, as you state, Commissioner Wise.
Thank you. And I'll just clarify, I'm not sure that I'm ready for staff to bring back a plan yet. I think it's worthwhile to have the conversation and see what priorities we all, all rise to the top, um, and then go from there. Or if anything, maybe have, um, different, different options.
I will remind you that we did vote on a list of, of budget priorities just a couple of meetings ago. So housing was one of those budget priorities. So at least in the general sense, we did adopt, um, housing as a priority. And I, I don't think I was thinking of a detailed work plan or anything like that, but just a, uh, answer to some of these questions about the, how the, this subcommittee would interweave with the comprehensive plan review and with the code update, uh, and what capacity we have now and what capacity we would need. Nick, you referred to scaffolding, and I think that, um, one of the critical questions is how much capacity does our community development department have? How much do planning commissioners have? And what really is the kind of the marginal, uh, investment that we minimum, that we need to put in in order to really get somewhere?
Sorry, Rick. I was just going to say, that's the other thing I, I was going to mention is that we don't have a community development director right now. So that makes it kind of tough. So I think once we get that individual on board, that might help with this. Sorry, Rick.
No worries. Uh, thank you for your comments, Commissioner. See if I can maybe address a few of the, the things that you spoke about. And I think Commissioner Ojero started first in terms of, um, the work of the comprehensive plan update. And that's still a critical priority that will continue to move forward. The Planning Commission is very, very, you know, on top of that and that process is moving well. This subcommittee again was an element of that as it started to come together. But I think we all agree that it also had expanded, uh, efforts that, uh, could potentially be best supported at the highest level. So I want to assure you and, and I certainly invite Nick or, um, Ed, if they disagree with what I'm saying, but the, that work is still critical. It still will move forward. The, the work is, you know, obviously going to be around a lot of housing needs analysis that, um, Ed had alluded to. And so this action would in no way prevent that from continuing. And it will be important information to help inform us as we move forward. To the budget piece that was brought up, uh, and I think we, we all wanted to provide to you certainly what the thoughts would be for a twenty-five, twenty-seven budget request, but we all recognize that you don't have that authority. You're not the full budget committee here today to be able to endorse that. But we want to at least give you a taste of what we thought, uh, basically could be a budget request. As I've alluded to, Ed, we would move this probably through the community development policy package, or excuse me, decision packages. Our new CFO is using some correcting my verbs. So, um, making sure that, uh, we move that through that process. But we wanted to give you at least the indication. I think the thoughts we're here today was, you know, here's the work that we have done. Clearly there's still a lot of questions as Commissioner Wise has, has put forward. But having that platform, that area to where we can engage those stakeholders and begin to, to start thinking through, how do we make a difference? Clearly the, the city, obviously city of Corvallis is a key partner in all of this. They're going to continue their good work and moving forward. But there's a lot of other efforts that we can study and understand how we can be best influential. The thought would be if there was the opportunity to maybe establish this committee under the umbrella, as I would like to say, of the Board of Commissioners, to be able to look at this and really get to the things that Commissioner Wise talked about. I think there's still a lot of work, a lot of learnings and a lot of directions, engagement with employers, whereas I think as someone said, skin in the game in relation to this. So I think that that's the things that we would like to be able to perhaps take off on. Uh, I talked to Vance a little bit about this in terms of the recommendation would be to, to give us a direction. Do we come back to you as staff and, and provide an opportunity to establish a committee, a housing, a regional housing, uh, committee, which you would of course be able to drive all the expectation parameters and of which we would move forward. And then perhaps we start those discussions as Ed and I've talked about in maybe May, April. And that can really help us inform better the budget committee when they get to that point of making a budgetary decision. So this is a, again, I respect what Commissioner Wise is saying is that we want to be, you know, thoughtful as we go through this. But I think with the social, that socialization efforts that have occurred, we've gotten a lot of, here's where the gaps are. Here's where a lot of some of the, the problems that we have to deal with. So we know how to begin engaging, um, this conversation to, to be able to take the next step. So I would invite Ed or, or Nick, if there was anything I missaid or corrections or additions they want to add.
Ben?
No, I don't, I don't have additions.
Well, well said.
So perhaps, you know, I, I'm thinking about a staff, uh, recommendation just as a starting point for further conversation. But obviously it's up to you two. I'm not continuing with the board. But in that case, But in that case, I would, I would amend the current motion that's in the packet to drop the resolution component. And just to say, we would move to direct staff to return in January, 2025 with proposed recommendations about the formation of a regional housing committee.
I had a little different take on that and wanting to, just the January 2025 ask of staff, and that's not very far away, is maybe put a, a little wiggle room in that in case we need a little more time.
I'm sorry, sure. I think the right area is in goal setting. And we, I know goal setting is getting pretty full for January, but I think definitely this winter we can, we can tackle this.
I think that you have to be careful about pushing it out too far because it is budget related. And no matter what staff recommends, that it's going to have to be costed out and it needs to flow into the CFO's budget process. So I would just urge caution in terms of pushing it out too far. And I don't think, I think the building blocks are here, but what I would, I just want to see the interweaving again of existing work and this added work and how it might look. I also have to say, I'm a little bit confused now about establishing a regional housing committee. This is a, still we're talking regional housing committee of the planning commission, correct?
So the, the planning commission has stood up this, this subcommittee with respect to land use and things like that. What Ed has identified is a need for a broader and more overarching, I use the word scaffold, into which the planning subcommittee would, would fit. It's that lack of scaffold right now, which is impeding the conversations and discussions that need to occur at the broadest levels.
Okay, I was misunderstanding that. That was another, another layer of, of committee. Yeah, and I understand now why there's the resources that are listed here are as significant as they are. So yeah, it's a good decision and I think definitely deserves another discussion of.
So I just wonder if we can not make a motion today, but just direct staff to, or ask staff to plan a goal setting agenda item?
Well, we could also memorialize that in a, a motion either way. I think that it's, we have a clearer record for the future if we memorialize it in a motion. And as I have discovered in my years here, it's wonderful to have a record that you can actually track. And you could point to later when you're talking to people.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to make a motion. The word urgency was mentioned.